Good evening. The hour being after 7:30, it's my honor and privilege to call the March 26th, 2020, School Committee Meeting to order. Per Governor Baker's Executive Order of the 12th of March, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law 38, Chapter 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access to school committee meeting. Members of the public will be able to view this meeting on Walpole Media Cable Access live as well as after the following day. And questions regarding the school committee meeting may be sent to our administrative assistant, Mary Mortali at mmortali@walpole.k12.ma.us. Next order of business, call of the roll. William Buckley, President. Mrs. Gallivan.
Present.
Ms. Lucchini.
Present.
Ms. Gayotets.
Present.
Ms. Donizio.
Present.
Mr. Breen.
Present.
Ms. Cyrek.
Present.
Excellent. And I would just ask, as we get into debates and questions, if you could just state your name beforehand before you speak. Unfortunately, there's a requirement, sad requirement, to do a moment of silence for former Superintendent Bassett, who passed away earlier last month. He, after a career of academia, he joined the Walpole, Massachusetts Public School System in 1965, was the Assistant Superintendent, advancing as Superintendent, and for 17 years until 1982, led the Walpole School Department. His advocacy for Walpole teachers and students, as well as his visionary mentoring of young teachers, hired, he hired as many as 80 students and teachers in one year, implemented a progressive and experimental education program. A lot of the environmental science that Walpole does today was because Dr. Bassett, unfortunately, had thoughts and affairs with his family. In the spirit of Dr. Bassett's innovation, we begin our first remote digital school committee meeting. Our next order of business is the Walpole High School Student Report. To call upon Representative Brendan Mahoney to give us a report. Ms. Mahoney.
Hello. I'm Brendan Mahoney, and I'm a junior at Walpole High School. As you know, yesterday, Wednesday, March 25th, Governor Charlie Baker ordered that all schools in Massachusetts be closed until the end of April with a planned return of May 4th. This week, Walpole High School students began remote learning from their homes, and this learning can come in many forms, with students being given work progressively or given all their work for the week in one day. Students are also meeting with their classes on applications such as Google Meets as well as Zoom. All assignments at the high school are being graded as complete or not complete for now and are not going to count towards GPA as of now. Students are also having meetings with their guidance counselors to plan their courses for next year, and juniors specifically are discussing their post-secondary options and how to prepare for senior year. And for sports, unfortunately, the Walpole High School Boys Hockey Division One Final at the Boston Garden was canceled, but they were named co-champs with Belmont High School, and it was an amazing season for the hockey team. The MIAA has postponed all spring sports until April 27th as of now, but this will be pushed out further, if not canceled due to the governor's mandate, and the MIAA Board of Directors will be meeting on March 30th to decide the fate of the spring sports season for high schools. Also, due to the closure in schools, all spring field trips, including the abroad field trips to Panama and France, have been canceled or postponed. And finally, the March and May SATs were canceled by the College Board, and the first date for the next SAT is going to be on June 6th, and Walpole High School was recently added as a test site for the June test. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris Mahoney. Any questions for Ms. Mahoney? Seeing none, thank you very much. Move on to new business. Health curriculum update. Mr. Wall. How are we all doing? Do you mean Bridgette, you want to hop into that?
Yep.
We'll try to run down as quickly as possible in the interest of time. So where we stand now with our health requirement, still a one-year requirement. Classes typically compete, complete the freshman class, freshman year of school. Below on that first slide is the majority of the topics that we go over and we cover throughout the year. You know, there's some minor things missing in there, but that's the gist of the main points of the program. You can go to the next slide, please. You know, and I think we're here to talk about the upgrades and the changes for the most part, so you know, this has been a very productive year for us, to be honest with you, starting with the hire of a new lead teacher in Krista Genke. We got her from Lexington. She's got over 10 years' experience. She's been a great fit. She has a plethora of experience and knowledge. This is something that she's incredibly passionate about. She really has jumped directly into this and done a number of things to improve. The curriculum improved, the way the class is run, the experience the students have. So we've kind of all been feeding off her up there, which has been, well, to be honest, kind of a godsend. Yeah, she's really excellent what she does. We've also taken to assign a permanent second teacher to the, to the health curriculum, which in the past, we've had up to four teachers teaching at least one section of the class, which has always been, you know, hot ideal, because it doesn't help for the alignment of the classes if there's four teachers teaching the same stuff. Every teacher has a different style. You know, now having a second teacher, and only a second teacher, it allows for almost 100% alignment across the sections, even though you may have a different teacher than your classmate, you're going to get almost the exact same lesson plan, and the only difference being, you will get the exact same lesson plan, the only difference being is, is the teacher teaches it their own specific way. Krista and Tori is the other teacher doing that. She has really kind of latched on. They work hand in hand. They share an office together. They're collaborating daily, so it's made for a very smooth transition and a lot of improvements to the curriculum for the freshman class. The structure is a little bit different. It feels a little bit different from an outside this perspective. If you were to just go watch the class this year opposed to any of the previous years, I think you'd really be almost taken aback as the, as the feel of the class, the structure of the class, much more classroom discussion-based, a lot more student interaction-based, a lot more breakout of groups, and have meaningful, purposeful discussions that allow the students to get comfortable with their classmates and with themselves. We've added the, a couple of different companies that we've been working with. We've had speakers come in from a company called Minding Your Mind. It's a company dedicated to ending the stigma around destructive behaviors. They have, they have speakers come in, and typically the speakers are on the younger side, so it's a much easier, the students can relate to them better, and they speak from their own personal experience, and they, they spend the whole day in the school. They're open up for questions. I sat in on one of them in the fall, and it was really, it was eye-opening to see a young kid come in there, you know, a young kid, 22, 23-year-old kid come in there, not too far removed from high school, speak on her own destructive behaviors that led off of a destructive relationship, that led to serious mental health issues that, you know, and I think you could just watch the feel of the class, the students were engaged, they were concerned, it was kind of eye-opening. We've also added a couple of different companies that we work with, they're videos now, the Green Heart World is a company that implements a series of videos regarding addiction, not just limited to drugs and alcohol, your typical addictions, and it moves into technology and pornography and a lot of different new age addictions that, that aren't really talked about as much as they probably should be with the changing of the, of the way things are going. We've been vamping up and what we have vamped up, and we have really done a great job of using videos and new pieces of curriculum and articles to touch on gender identity and how students think about it and enlighten them on, on all the new terms and all the new laws and all the new regulations and things that a lot of high school students, especially freshmen, are just not very aware of, but it is such a huge part of the ever-changing health world that it needs to be touched on. You can move to the next slide. You know, going forward.
Hold on, guys. Yeah, I don't know why that's doing that. Hold on, I'll share it again.
I can't hear anything, but I'll talk about it anyway. I know what I want to say. Going forward, you know, big picture, we have a planned place. Next year will look a little bit, will look very similar to next year, I mean, to this previous year, but you know, that's, that's for a number of reasons. So basically, when we started this whole transition of the health and PE program three, four years ago, we made a decision to do it in a manner that wouldn't disrupt everything immediately, we would just blow it all up, it would be a gradual build, and considering we, we're kind of coming to the end of that gradual build, which is, which is coming at a great time. Next year, every student will have a four-year PE requirement, and with that, we're restructuring the way we do our PE classes, which in turn is going to allow us to restructure the way we, we think about health for our students, because like I said at the very beginning as of now, we only have a ninth grade requirement. The plan going forward, not this fall, but the next fall, is, well, this fall, we will have ninth and 10th grade PE together, 11th and 12th grade PE together. Going forward, the following year, 11th and 12th grade PE will be almost, I guess I'll use the term rebranded into more of a wellness model, which will have a 25% to 30% classroom-based model, touching on health issues concerning junior, senior high school students that they need to be made aware of. I've done a lot of looking into this. I did a site, site visit out of Melrose early this year, speaking with other, other people in my position. This kind of seems to be a model that's making its way back around, because with, with, you know, for whatever reason, upper-class health has been something that has been kind of lost in the shuffle along with school systems, and this is a way to make sure it gets back in, and I think it's a perfect way to, to A fulfill our four-year PE requirement, but also to take advantage and kind of throw everything under the same umbrella that's important for the students. I think that there's a million different conversations to be had, potentially on the same topics, but with juniors and seniors that you can't have with freshmen, or you shouldn't have with freshmen. So the rebranding and the adding the wellness curriculum, the wellness aspect to the upper class PE in two years is something that will happen, I feel very strongly about. I think it just allows us a better overall experience for our students, to put them in a better position to succeed and to be on top of things. And like I said, it's really not possible to start that immediately next year. The main reason being, we have run into a number of issues with scheduling and class sizes. The hope, as you guys won't know, is that we'd like to add another PE position through the department next year, so that would allow for us to open up another, what have you, six sections of PE slash health, which then, we've got some figuring out to do, some wiggle room to do, to best access our space, which is limited. We only currently have one classroom. We only have the small gym, the small weight room, you know, so these, this time of year, the winter months, it's tough to fit potentially 100 people into, into the same section for PE and health. So the goal for me is next year, we finish off our staffing, we have a fifth full-time member, we keep the structure with two health teachers running the majority of those classes. We work out all the kinks in the rescheduling of ninth and 10th grade together, 11th and 12th grade together, and then the following year, we have the blueprint for, A, the ideal situation to have as many classes running at a time, B, the ideal situation for having the right size of number of students in the class, is the, the right mix of teachers who teach in what sections, and that then makes changing any PE curriculum very, very easy. The hardest thing for us is not curriculum, it's not, I think we have the correct people in the building to really dial in and get an excellent upper-class curriculum for our health. I just think, right now, we're not in a good spot space-wise or class-size-wise to really take on another big change as of now. We've also, and we're also in the process of offering electives for upperclassmen. They, they will be in the program of study for next year. We're starting with the weight room, with a weight class, and we're starting with the lifetime activities class, that hopefully we'll get the, we have got the green light to put in there, hopefully we market them well enough that we get at least a section of each, and the intent behind those is both those classes, by very definition of the description, have a very easy wellness aspect to it. You know, with the weight room class, you can clearly talk about your diet, you can talk about proper sleep, proper nutrition, yada, 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 you know, all that stuff. And with the, with the other class that we're playing and offering is the lifetime activities course, that's wellness in a nutshell. Lifetime activity is essentially something that you can do by yourself or with a small group of people, you keep yourself healthy from a small age to as old as you can possibly be. So all in all, you know, we're in a really good spot. The biggest change this year has been the addition of our full-time health teacher. She has been excellent, like I said, and with that, there's been a great trickle-down of updating all our curriculum, updating our resources. Something as small as, as changing over some of our videos, to just give students a more 2020 approach to things is something that we needed, and so we made the effort to do so. I think changing with the way the classes are run was something that was important to us. I don't necessarily believe in just lecturing in a health classroom and say, here's your curriculum, learn it, take the test, and we'll move on. I think it's so important for students to be able to have meaningful conversations, and, and it's almost as another outlet for students, and you know, that's the goal of having a well-run health class, is that it, your teachers almost become another outlet for students to feel comfortable, to discuss things that maybe they don't want to discuss with their friends, but also to open up their eyes and say, hey, this is something that's going on, you might be feeling this, you might know someone that's going through this, it's normal, it happens all the time, you know, and here's where we are. And I think we've taken the right step, we have the right people in place. I think we have the right idea going forward with our classes and the way we're teaching them, and I think the idea of, of adding a mandatory wellness aspect to, to the rebranding of our, of our PE classes for 11th and 12th graders is something that we 100% need, and it's something that we will be doing once we can master the staffing and the scheduling and, you know, really think I keep it. I mean, that's where we stand with everything right now. That's where we stand with things. Like I said, I, you know, three years ago, when I asked to change all the requirements and stuff, we made an effort to say, you know what, we can't just blow this thing up right now, that'd be way too disruptive. And it was a slow build, and now we're kind of, in the fall, I think we're, we're at the finish line, and up there, from there, it's just going to be a complete and utter improvement, because we're going to have all the needs and all the staff and all the support and the backing and the right people in place to do so. Thank you, Coach. Any questions for Coach Wall? Mrs. Gallivan.
First of all, this is music to my ears, Dave. I've been, you know, wondering where we're going with this for a while, and so much of what you just talked about was what I was, was hoping was in the pipeline. So, thank you, that was awesome. For Bridgette and Bill Hahn, I'm wondering, when I was thinking about this presentation, I was, I'm wondering if we should be doing something even more of an integrated approach at like the administrative level, where health and wellness is combined with counseling and nursing and PE staff, so that there's like a comprehensive approach to how we deliver some of the health-related curriculum from grades K through 12. I think that that is the, like the, the thinking behind the Wellness Committee. So, I know, when we, I think about the staff that we've added over the last three or four years, so many of it is in this area of wellness. And so I think that there's an opportunity to bring them all under one umbrella, and I don't necessarily think that it falls into Dave Wall's category, but just something I wanted to mention tonight, since we were talking about health and wellness. And then I have three other points. Should I keep going? Dave, I'm part of a vaping, anti-vaping task force, and to me, that's just a topic that can't wait. Like, that's a topic that somehow has to get addressed with every, I mean, what they're talking about statewide is putting together free information for all teachers' grades three through 12. That's what we're working on, but I, I, you know, I'm not being picky about the fact that I don't remember seeing it in your slide, and maybe I was just reading it too fast, but vaping needs to be, be something that, you know, we, we hit every kid with so that they get some information this year on it if possible.
It's, it's covered in both the middle school and the high school. I don't know if I, I might have just thrown it under the tobacco and alcohol when I was putting it together in the slide, but it's touched on, it's covered. The thing with vaping, it's be perfect, I don't, it's still one of those things that, like you said, there's not a ton of like hardcore information out there. It's a lot of like, this is what's going on, and it's really stuck up on people, not stuck up on people, but it's really something that's got like, pretty heavy duty pretty quick, and I think people are starting to realize just how bad it is, and I also think people are starting to realize how early it started. So that's something to talk to, we've talked about middle school health teachers about. I know our high school health teachers talked about it, our middle school teachers touched on it. I am more than open to get any training or any supplements, because I think it's something that, that I think everyone kind of wants more information on to make sure we're doing it the right way. I don't know if there's a blueprint to how to go about it yet, but I'm more than willing to, to take any advice and any suggestions you got.
I can tell you that Rachel Jackson from the high school has joined the same task force, so, and what we have found is, there's, there's almost too much information out there, we're trying to cull it down, but in the meantime, for right now, she's a tremendous resource. The Food and Drug Administration has some free material, you know, it's, it's, there's not one right way of doing it, but it's just a topic that needs to get built in somewhere, ideally for the kids before the end of this school year, because it's just such a pertinent topic. The other one that, I have four kids who have gone through the school system, and most of them don't really want to talk too much about, you know, what they remember or their experiences, but two of my daughters have talked to me about the fact that we have not done enough in terms of talking to kids about sexual assault. The percentage of sexual assaults that happen on college campuses is astounding, and, you know, that would just be another one that I would say, you need to talk to kids from the point of view of boys as well as girls. It ruins lives, and, you know, it's just something that to me is a relevant junior and senior year topic. So, I've been waiting for this meeting, so I don't mean to like dump on you, but these are just some thoughts that I've been waiting for a little while to bring up.
And I can, I can say, I sat in on a class earlier this year with Krista, talking about relationship violence, relationship consent, and healthy relationships. So it's being touched on. I can't speak to it in the past, if it maybe was or wasn't, but this year, it's definitely being touched on in the, in the, under the umbrella of healthy relationships and what defines health relationship, what defines consent, what defines violence, dating violence, things of that nature. So, glad you said that, I'm also happy to know that I sat in on the class with it, it was being covered.
That's great, and if we could just figure out a way to get that message, because as you said, juniors and seniors need to be spoken to in a different way, so if we can think about how to, I actually looked online, my daughter who went to Loyola had to do an online program before she attended school, and it was about drugs, alcohol, and sexual violence. I can send you that, because it's another just decent free resource that's out there that, you know, even if it's just during gym classes right now, it would be, I think it would be a service to our students if we do something. And then, my other question is about elementary health. Well, it's more, it's more K through 12 health. I know a couple of years ago, when bullying became a big topic, it was hard to get a sense of what we do in terms of anti-bullying curriculum, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, I'm just putting it out there as something that you guys can get back to us on, but as far as I understand, elementary health is supposed to be being taught by a combination of the gym teachers, the nurses, the classroom teachers, and the PE teachers, if I understand it right. And, you know, I guess my question is, how's that going? Do we have a curriculum app that we can look at to say, yeah, we, we really hit on anti-bullying a little bit every year, and I'm just using that as the example, we should be hitting on vaping every year, we should be hitting on a whole bunch of different topics, but if we could get some information in the future on the K through, sort of the K through five, I know what the middle school health program does.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we have lessons in place. The way it's structured right now, like you said, there is a combination between the nurses, the teachers, and the PE teachers. In a perfect world, in what they try to hold to, they do one health lesson a month, they see each homeroom twice a week, so it essentially works out to one out of eight, and then they, I do not believe, I can have the curriculum on my computer, but I don't want to type around right now.
Yeah, don't worry.
They do not touch on bullying, if I remember correctly, to be honest with you. I think that's more a school-wide thing that we've just kind of assumed. It's covered through school and social norms and things of that, but in terms of my teachers specifically having a lesson for that, they do not, off the top of my head, I do not believe, I think I would remember if they did too, but so, you know, like I said, that's probably not, if that's something that needs to be addressed, that's an easy fix, and I have no problem addressing that, but as of now, that's not something that falls into what they're doing.
Great, so that's fine.
I also think, Nancy, that they, a lot of that with the principals and the teachers that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill Hahn, with responsive classroom, that's implemented embedded as young as preschool, all the way through fifth grade, and those are, that curriculum is embedded into some social practices, norms, and anti-bullying format. Am I correct, Bill?
Yeah, that's correct. I was taking notes here, and that was one of the things that I wrote down about responding to the classroom, getting some more information out that to you for that, Nancy.
Great, thank you very much, all of you.
Further questions, Coach Wall? Seeing none, thank you very much, Coach.
All right, guys. Good to see you all. Take care, stay healthy.
Thanks, Dave.
I'm free to leave, right?
Yeah.
Yes, you are. You can stay though, Coach, if you want.
I got, I got some Doctor Menti, they're gonna catch up on us.
Our next order of new business is the Student Opportunity Act, Student Opportunity Plans. Dr. Goff.
Yes, as you may be familiar, the Student Opportunity Act was signed into law November 26th, which provides infusion of new funding in Massachusetts public schools. It's really to promote equity across the state. So depending on your district, some districts may receive, receive more funding and others, not so much. We're in the not so much. So, but we were able, with the money that we were able to get, which was, I think, $106,000, with that, that what we have to do is we have to submit a plan, and depending on if you're over a certain amount of money, that you're, you have to have a long form, if you're under and getting more of a minimal amount or nominal amount, that you would complete a short form. So that I have to submit to the state. The deadline is April 1st, but because of coronavirus, I know that they'll, I'm confident that they'll extend that date, but I feel like let's just, you know, we're staying status quo, this was on the agenda, so I did complete the draft, I think you have that as, as for your review, and I know we've talked about, we've talked about this in detail about what we need in, in terms of positions for the budget, and really, the focus is on the Student Opportunity Act, is what you're doing, is it requires superintendents in consultation with their school committees to really create an improvement plan that specifies how this amount will be spent. And really, the goal is, is that our charge is closing the achievement gaps, and what we focused on, and what we decided to focus on, we've talked about, like I said, in detail, was our English learner population. So when you look at that plan and focusing on that subgroup, we talked about that, our, we highlighted the EL population, we know that's an increasing population in our district, and we mentioned that since October 2019, that we had 133 students in our population that were classified as English learners, and that 10% of our population whose first language is not English, and we have over 30 students that recently arrived in our community. So in order to address these changes in the student population and really invest in both the delivery models and resources to meet the needs of the diverse learners, that we're committing this intensive work to close the gaps and achievement and opportunity gaps for these, this student subgroup, and really recognize that we will, it will take the efforts of our, our district staff, but also our families and communities. So, if you look at that document, what it needed to do was to document evidence-based strategies we would use. The ESOL teacher that we talked about was in there. Um, the ESOL teacher that we talked about was in there along with the ESOL support specialists and, and resources. And then we also have to document how we're going to monitor the success of our outcome and metrics and targets. And there's, there's specified targets that DEES, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, requires. So out of those, we'll look at our, um, ELA and math student growth percentiles along with our, um, English proficiency levels, because our English language proficiency in terms of accountability is that six-year span of being, um, English language proficient. We'll look at chronic absenteeism. If you remembered from my entry plan, we took a look at those numbers and that population, um, tends to have a higher chronic absenteeism than compared to, um, other, other groups. And really looking at our graduation rate as well. Um, so that is what we're looking for. And then we also have to take a look at how we're going to engage our families, um, as well. And, and that's noted in the document. So, um, once that is, is approved by school committee, then I can go ahead and upload it into the DEES files, um, and, and submit it for approval.
Questions for Dr. Goff?
I think Carrie's got a question. Carrie, you have a question? Just unmute yourself.
No, just, uh, just a comment. I think, you know, I remember hearing about this reporting requirement after the law got passed and thinking like, that's one more thing on your plate that you have to deal with. But I do think it's really important that it's forcing us to take a look at, in particular, this subgroup and what we're doing to meet their needs, because we are doing a lot right now. Um, and I think, you know, it's important to, for us to be able to measure our progress. It's going to end up being a nice tool, even though, you know, it's, it's one more kind of layer of oversight. I think it's going to be to our benefit.
Agreed.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none in keeping with the norms of Zoom committee work. I'm going to, uh, do a roll call.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, a motion, Mrs. Gallivan, a second?
Second.
Second, but I'm Ms. Muccini. Mr. Buckley, yes. Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gaeltits?
Yes.
Ms. Anizio?
Yes.
Mr. Breen?
Yes.
Ms. Sirek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our next order of business is the Tech Collaborative Agreement. Uh, Mrs. Gallivan is our tech representative. Do you want to start the discussion there?
Sure. It's, it's really a very, it's really a very simple thing. Um, we have to vote to sign a new tech collaborative agreement, um, only because the town of Medway wants to join the collaborative. So in order to add a new member, everybody has to vote to agree to do that. So, um, so tech amendment, I mean, the tech collaborative has been amended. The only significant change is that Medway will be listed as a town in the collaborative. And then there were teeny tiny housekeeping changes that got made during the rest of it, not even really worth paying attention. I mean, I can tell you what they are, but they're not significant. Um, adding another town to the collaborative is generally just a benefit. It makes the, the group stronger in terms of numbers and in terms of participants. Um, the only potential negative would be if they had a large number of students, which they don't already. In our programs, you get a savings on money at, by being a member town. So if they had huge numbers, it wouldn't have made sense, but it made a lot of sense just from an educational point of view and a financial point of view. So that's the, the reason that they're on the agenda. I sent you guys, um, a copy or a link to their annual report, because a lot of people don't understand what collaboratives do. So, um, you know, I just put that there so that you would have information about it. It's a great program. And, um, essentially with one other thing, um, that I, I want to just mention at the end, the main thing it's on the agenda for is we have to amend the agreement to include Medway. Is there anything else that you would add, Bridgette?
No, that was just my question about, um, numbers, um, you know, just in terms of slots for our students. But it doesn't seem like that would be an issue, so I would support it.
Uh, further questions for Nancy as our tech representative? And I, I think, I think it's, it's well just to kind of highlight for those maybe listening at home that this is a great organization that Walpole is a component part of, made up of other towns that work together to do special ed, um, services and, and purchase, uh, consumables together and other things. And that we have, uh, two side bits now that, uh, in, within Walpole that host house tech programs. Is that correct or is there more?
Two, in Walpole. Yep.
Uh, so Nancy, you need a, a vote to approve the, uh, tech collaborative agreement?
Exactly, yeah.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend the tech agreements going forward.
Give me a second. I saw Kristin's hand first. We'll do a Brady Bunch thing here. All right, let's go down the list. Uh, Buckley, yes. Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gaeltits?
Yes.
Ms. Anizio?
Yes.
Mr. Breen?
Yes.
Ms. Sirek? Excellent. Moving on, uh, to superintendent's report.
Bill, can I just add one, can I just add one thing before we move on?
Yeah, sure.
I, I did want to, I did want to point out to, um, to Brendan, and I'm glad you stayed on. Um, Tech was going to do a, um, an open house for their summer internships. And it was supposed to be on April 7th in Walpole. It's been canceled. But Tech offers a lot of, of internship opportunities. Um, I don't know if anybody would ask you, but I'm going to, um, send a note to Stephen Bush tomorrow also. If kids are interested in doing a summer internship, they should just reach out to Tech directly.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. I'll pass along that information to you and Mr. Ambush, okay?
All right, thank you.
Good opportunity there. Uh, moving on to our next order of business, superintendent's report. Dr. Goff?
Yes, um, well, you can imagine what the superintendent report is all about. A hundred percent of it, uh, is on COVID-19. Um, so just to update you, and I, I handed you some notes. Um, you know, we've been involved, I've been involved, the leadership team has been involved in multiple, multiple Zoom sessions. I, I don't think we've, I think we've been in more Zoom sessions than in one day than we have been in probably five years. Um, so what I'm doing is, um, we're, uh, meeting basically weekly with, uh, superintendent roundtable groups. Um, I also have, uh, we have weekly meetings with, uh, the commissioner, Commissioner Riley, the Commissioner of Education. Um, I'm meeting weekly with leadership council. That's probably going to start now at twice a week. Um, we are, I'm speaking daily with the central admin team with Bill Hahn, Mike Frischa, John Quealy and myself. Um, we have, I have a weekly meeting, we have weekly meetings with, uh, the town department heads. Jim Johnson has a standing Thursday, uh, virtual meeting. And then I'm also speaking daily with, uh, Jim Johnson and then Melissa, uh, our Board of Health Director. Um, we're doing that da- daily. Um, I'm still working out of the town hall, hall daily. We'll see if that changes. Um, most people are on skeleton crew or coming in when there's no one else, um, around. So, um, Jim and I will continue to do that along with Melissa, um, until, um, we're otherwise not, not able to, to work in here. But basically the town hall is closed and, and there's a skeleton crew down here. Um, primary focus, about 95% of the day is dealing with COVID-19. I, I did an analogy. It's kind of like whack-a-mole. Um, so things change daily, sometimes hourly. So you feel like you get, you know, my, one thing accomplished and then another thing pops up. And then you go into that and then the first thing you whack down pops right back up again. So it's really continuous most motion, but however, um, it's important for the community and you all to know that, um, we're here and we'll continue to update families on a, on a weekly basis. We sent a letter out. It was interesting. Um, we, we crafted a letter yesterday, had it ready to go at three o'clock, felt good about it. And then at 3:30 Baker came on and announced the, um, the, the school closing. And we said, okay, we, we got to go back to the drawing board and we revised it. And so, um, you know, Bill and I worked on that and then got it out at 7:30 this morning. And as of 7:30 this morning, we had, you know, 12 confirmed cases at the time of writing the letter. And then at 11 o'clock, we've had 15 confirmed in Walpole. And I'm sure at the time that I'm talking about this at 8:15, I'm sure that's changed as well. So things are changing daily. Last week, LC focused on what we call is phase one, when we knew that, thought that we were coming back, you know, on the 6th. So we developed and communicated a plan for our three-week closure. Our highest priority is to support the students and families during this closure. Letters were sent to families on March 16th. That was last Monday. March 19th, last Thursday, and then also, um, today. So we'll have weekly communication, like I said, we'll continue. Um, as of last Friday, students and families receive communication from school staff. So depending on the grade level, resources and materials and learning tools that help students access learning at home, that may look different depending on the grade level. But we, the goal remained consistent. It was to promote school connectedness and then to promote a continuity, continuity of learning, to extend and apply the skills that will be valuable when the students return to school. We know that this cannot replace traditional instruction and the face-to-face learning experience. Um, but I do have to note, and, um, Bill, just feel free to jump in with the staff. Um, what the staff has done has been unbelievable, has been nothing short, would I say, in the short amount of time, it's been amazing. Um, you know, there's talk out there that it's like, um, you know, being in a plane, learning how to build, you know, you're building a plane while you're flying at the same time. So just some examples, you know, teachers are holding large Zoom, uh, class sessions to stay connected to students and, and, and to, uh, review work. Uh, videos are being created at, at all levels. Um, for example, um, preschool teachers reading to their students. One preschool teacher, um, you know, sent a video to students of a, of a science experiment. And really creating opportunities, especially at this preschool level, to be connected with students when these students, you know, are having a hard time understanding why they're not in school, why they're not with their teachers, why they're not with their, with their friends. Um, principals are holding large staff meetings and digital learning coaches are providing support to both students and staff. Um, we have grade level meetings. We have, um, department level meetings. Um, the music lesson program, the, our after-school music lesson program, um, we're going to try to hold those music lessons virtually for families that want to continue. Um, so I, I really just want to commend the staff for their hard work, their dedication and, and commitment. You know, obviously I have a husband at home that's a fifth grade teacher and, you know, I see, you know, what's going on as well. And having Zoom classroom, uh, lessons with, uh, classes and calling students on the phone and talking to parents. Um, you know, he, he said to me, I am exhausted. Um, and, and he said, you know, I've, I've worked hard before, but it, it's just that people have to understand this is a new way. This is a, a, a new way of learning, a new way of instructing. Um, so it is. It's, it's exhausting, you know, at the end of the day and the end of the week. Um, Bill, any, any comment on that before I, I move on?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to speak too forward in case I repeat what you might say later on, but, um, I, I also want to add the, uh, incredible commitment of our, of our teaching staff. And, and I should mention all of our staff, including our counselors, who have done, um, incredible work to make sure that they are also seeing and connecting, um, with sometimes our most vulnerable students. Um, I also wanted to add that when we, two weeks ago, when we met as a leadership team to determine how this would look for Walpole, we were no different than so many other surrounding communities that were trying to decide what does remote learning look like? What does continuity learning look like? And, um, we talked at great length, uh, about trying to make sure that our teachers, who are most connected to our students, um, had the opportunity to lead. And we made that, that was very intentional that we were driving through our teachers because we knew that this could look very different in two more weeks. And we thought if we just tried to send out a bunch of links and a bunch of resources and we just simply said, you know, to our families, you know, click on this link for literacy or click on this link for mathematics, um, we knew that that wouldn't sustain itself, uh, three, four, five weeks down the road. So this strategy of working through our teachers has allowed us to be a lot more flexible and fluid. Um, and I think in a really good position. Uh, it's not ideal to not be with our students, stay in and day out, but I think we're at, Walpole's in a really good position right now the way that we've rolled out the initial steps of remote learning, um, to ensure that continuity. And so we have to make some transitions coming up, which I'm sure Dr. Goff will speak about. Um, but I think we're in a great position to do that. Again, I think it goes back to the commitment of all of our educators, um, and we're really appreciative of that.
Thanks, Bill. Um, so in terms, before I get, get to that, but in terms of feeding our families who need assistance, um, I mentioned this in my letter today, that, you know, last weekend we were, um, able to deliver food packages to, to over 50 family homes. I know that's increasing. Um, we're getting emails, um, you know, to, to ask for, for increased assistance, which we are providing and Maria Hall is, is leading the charge on that. And we distribute approximately 3,500 pounds of dry goods and 3,500 pounds of produce and fresh produce and, and frozen meats. Um, so providing enough food for two weeks. So the next food shipment, um, I think is going to arrive today, should arrive, have arrived today or will arrive tomorrow. And then we'll have another distribution around April 3rd or 4th. So we'll continue to assess and distribute those food packages to, to families, um, every couple of weeks. So we're also assisting on the town side, on the council on aging as well, in storing some of those perishable foods at Walpole High School, um, so they can be packaged and delivered to our senior citizens. So really a, a kudos and thank you to Maria Hall for, um, leading this effort for us. Um, I know Walpole High School's provided some needed eye, um, masks, um, from the science department, uh, to the fire department. And I know there's been a call out for Norwood Hospital, um, for, uh, gloves. So we're looking at what we have in terms of surplus and, and Mike is leading that, uh, with Kathy Garvin, um, to help them out because, um, they're basically, uh, have, have little to none, um, over there. So this week, um, we started before the, the governor announced, I call it two phases. We started on phase two. What if we're out longer than, than April 6th? So we got a little bit ahead of the game here. And, um, so as you know, you know, Governor Baker, as Brendan had mentioned, that we will be closed, you know, through May 4th. So this will cremate, create some challenges, but we are confident that we're going to meet the needs of our students. It, it remains fluid. We were waiting for guidance, um, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which did come out at noon today. So we are having a leadership council meeting tomorrow to discuss that guidance. But after reading that guidance, Bill and I were in agreement that, um, we, it puts us in a very good position, um, moving forward. So we, we're, we're really confident about that because it, it may look a little different, um, from continuity of learning to really, um, being able to help students and now further some learning because we're, we're going to be out for, you know, more than we anticipated. So, um, what we've been doing and what we'll continue to do puts us, puts us really in a, in a good position. And what's really great is, um, Dave Cuzzi, who's our, our union president, has been involved with us. Um, I talk to him every other day. Uh, he's been involved in some of our leadership meetings, just getting feedback, asking, um, you know, what he thinks, asking how the teacher, how the staff is doing. So it's really been a, a true collaborative partnership and I'm confident that will, will continue, um, in the future. Um, while we've been working also to communicate our academic expectations, uh, we noted this in our letter too. It's important that the students have the social emotional support during the school clo- closure. So our counselors, they've been working, um, in sharing social emotional resources with our families. We put a link to Castle on our, our website. That's the collaborative for academic, social and emotional learning. And our counselors have also been virtually meeting with some of our students or connecting over the phone and sending videos to students. So please, um, don't hesitate to contact, um, your school principal if you, or your counselor, if your child needs to connect, um, with, with either the counselors, they can contact the principal or the, the school counselor. So, um, we're also, uh, answering emails and, and taking a look at people that might need some wellness checks, also people that need help with, uh, with rent, um, as well as food. So, you know, we do have the academic side and that's important, but we also need to remember the social emotional component as well, not only for our students, but for our families. And then finally, the Department of, uh, Elementary and Education, I also put this in the letter as a link. There are a list of resources and WGBH has really partnered, um, to create some distance learning. And they've also, um, expanded their broadcasting from noon to, until 5:00 PM weekdays. Um, it's called the World It's called the World Channel, to create some resources and some educational components for students as well. I know there's been a lot of question about MCAS testing. DEES is exploring all options, they're working with the governor's office, and as soon as we hear anything, I will, I will let you know. I know there's been some question from the seniors regarding prom and graduation. Mr. Imbush is aware of this, we're aware of this, you know, we haven't, you know, given up, we need to postpone, we will postpone when it's safe to do so, but that is something that we're working on, because we know that this is a tough situation for everybody, but, you know, we're really thinking of our seniors as well and want to do whatever we can for them. So I think that's about it. I think, any questions, comments, it'll, we'll continue.
Bridgette, can I just add just two small things?
Sure.
Just one is, this everyone's aware, because I know this group, this body is what decides our spending, and the commitment to the Chromebooks has made a big difference. Our six, all the way from sixth to 12th grade have Chromebooks to bring home, and I just want to make sure the school committee is where, the community is where, that we also made Chromebooks available for students in grades two to five, if those students do not have a device at home, and our technology department and principals and some other staff worked closely together on last Thursday to get those out, and our principals have handed out probably 15 to 20 each since that one day, we've handed out over 150 Chromebooks to grades two to five. And then also just considering, Bridgette, you touched on it, but the restructuring of our digital learning coach, I know was not an easy decision we made last year, but we are really seeing the benefits of that decision and our ability to be flexible and to ensure that our teachers have the support to make the changes necessary for the remote learning. So I think that's just really important to point out as well.
We're also working on updating the webpage, so thanks to BJ Burke for working on that. So we're making progress.
Further questions for Dr. Goff? Psychothozy. Thank you very much. I know so many people in the local public schools are working so hard, and you and your leadership team are giving us a very strong and visionary directive, and it's uncharted times, so I know the community is very grateful for all your work. Moving on to Old Business, the Revised Strategic Plan Second Reading. Dr. Goff?
Yeah, so last, last school committee meeting, you had a first reading of the strategic plan, the changes and the strike-throughs were in red, and the goal priorities, you know, a highlight of the focus was in yellow, so I don't know if anybody had any feedback or comments about it. I know a lot of you were involved in participating in the strategic plan, most of us were.
Anyone with questions or comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the strategic plan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gail Tits, second by Mr. Green. Ms. Buckley, yes, Ms. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Tits?
Yes.
Ms. Denizio?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Syrek? Excellent. Motion's carried. Now move on to an FY21 budget update, I don't know if it starts with Bridgette or Mr. Frisha, but.
Well, I'll just start by just letting, you know, you know that, you may be aware that, you know, with what has been going on, obviously, that we're on, it's, we're not really calling it, Bill Buckley, you made a good point, it's not, you know, a budget freeze, it's a budget frost, so there's no further spending, it's just what is essential? Essential items only. Mike, anything to comment?
No, I think if you're talking about FY20, that's very accurate. FY21 is just kind of set aside for this time.
Excellent. Any questions, Mr. Frisha, Dr. Goff? Ms. Denizio?
Maybe it would be good just for people who are tuning in to explain what's covered in essentials for FY20.
So I would say the utilities, salaries in most cases, the governor has encouraged us to continue to pay people as frequently as possible, so we are continuing to do that without much disruption. And we are looking at all our other expenditures, we're looking at very closely to see if anything is optional. If it is, we're putting it up at the very least on hold or liquidating POs and saying that that's not a priority for this year.
Any further questions? Seeing none, now moving on to our next order of Old Business, Massachusetts School Building Authority update.
I can take that. So in terms of the MSBA, the project team met virtually with David Stevens, and what he, he's in charge of the visioning portion of MSBA. In terms of what we would like, what we're looking at for our visioning overview and priority for our goals for some of the, either a new or renovated building. So we met with him, Mike was involved in it, Bill Hahn was involved in it, myself, Patrick, and David, and just really just providing an overview of what does this visioning process look like for us with the middle school project? And really taking a look, and he, he's looking at a series of three workshops, and the first workshop would run approximately four hours, and that would be really looking at like some of our priority goals, looking at 21st century learning goals, looking at what we call, it's like SCOG, it's just strengths, your challenges, your opportunities, and your growth analysis. So he does that, so he's looking at that for April 17th. Now, obviously, we'll need to do that virtually, so we'll iron out some of the kinks with him, and we're pretty confident that we're gonna be able to do that with a large group. He recommends 30 to 40 participants, so what we're doing is we're currently working on identifying, you know, a cross-section of staff, parents, and community members to be a part of that visioning process. So next week, we'll, we'll reach out to those of you that are on the, the school building team, so, you know, Nancy, Jen, and Mark, to see what you see as terms of, you know, possible stakeholders or community members that may want to be involved in this. And then Bill Hahn and I are working with the middle school principals and the teachers to see, because he said 40 is a good cross-section right now for this, for this visioning process. I know that we'll have, we'll have more. For example, there's a second one that they're looking at for the visioning process, so after, after you complete those four hours, the next part is looking at guiding principles for design. And that one, he's looking at a date for May 15th, so fingers crossed, maybe we'll be back, and then we can all get the library, the community room for all of us together. And then you have a third meeting, hopefully in June, and that really looks at key spaces. So that was just the overview with David, taking a look at what do those three look like, what type of participants are we looking for, and just a, you know, whole overview of the process. Any comments, Mike or Bill, on that? Anything I left out?
Excellent. Moving on to subcommittee activity, there is none. I'm sorry, actually, under School Building Authority, are there any questions on the committee? Seeing none. Moving on to subcommittee activity, Dr. Goff, there is none to report, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. There is no citizens' comments. Again, for those listening along at home, if you have a question or concern for the committee, you can email it to mmortally@walpole.k12.ma.us, as well as our school committee link that is on our website. Would someone like to take the warrants? Ms. Denizio?
One second. Hold them up. There we go. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the following K-Roll warrants from March 5th, number 2036PA, for the amount listed in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Denizio, second by Ms. Gail Tits? Mr. Buckley, yes, Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Tits?
Yes.
Ms. Denizio? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Syrek?
Yes.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to accept the following accounts payable warrants from March 12th, 220037, from March 19th, 220038, and from March 26th, 220039, for the amounts listed in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Denizio, second by Ms. Gail Tits, I'm sorry. Mr. Buckley, yes, Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Tits?
Yes.
Ms. Denizio? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Syrek?
Yes.
Someone, there are no gifts in the packet I have in front of me. Would someone like to take the approval of minutes?
I would make a motion to approve the budget workshop meeting minutes from March 12th.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gallivan, second by Ms. Denizio, Mr. Buckley, yes, Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Tits?
Yes.
Ms. Denizio? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Syrek?
Yes.
And I would make a motion to approve the regular committee meeting minutes from March 12th.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gallivan, second by Ms. Muccini, Mr. Buckley? Yes, that's me. Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini? Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Tits?
Yes.
Ms. Denizio? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Syrek?
Yes.
There is nothing else in our regular meeting. May I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of union and non-union negotiations, and for the committee to not return, for to return possession or for the purposes of amendment?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. So. Yes, Ms. Gail Tits, second by Ms. Muccini, I'm trying, I'm trying to look at the Brady Bunch here. All those is, Mr. Buckley, yes, Mrs. Gallivan?
Yes.
Ms. Muccini?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Tits?
Yes.
Ms. Denizio? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Syrek?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. This concludes the public portion of our meeting.